Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Jello Court?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Cusella?
Here. First order of business tonight is to accept the minutes of the October 22nd, 2019 minutes. Can I have a... Everybody had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Any changes?
No.
Okay. No changes. Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the...
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the first item on the agenda tonight is an adjourned public hearing. It's appeal number 197686. Anthony Bettini seeking area variance of section 240-37 District Regulations in our 40 zoning district. Where 25 feet to the side yard line is required, the applicant can only provide 11.8 feet for the installation of an in-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 13.2 feet. Prop is located at 7 Carmel Heights and is identified by tax grid number 625804772231 in the town of Wapanger. Can I have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just come up and tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do, because this time now, the audience is going to get an opportunity to comment as well, so go ahead.
So, I guess, we went to the side yard versus the... I think that variance was 13 feet, 2 inches, and I hope we see that in a good light.
So, one of the things we want to talk to you about tonight is, we noticed that you had Plan B with you last time, and we noticed that you pulled the pool back, you know, to, I guess, the front of the property here, but we were actually looking for, at least myself and I think Mr. Shalise, we're looking for it to move back a little bit farther. Was... Because last time we talked to you, there was, you know, we wanted to talk about the swell on the side of the yard, move it back more towards the drain, kind of equal to where that little small patio was on the side. I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at that, but we haven't seen any new plans submitted.
We did the plans from the last time.
You pulled it back, but we were actually looking for it a little bit farther back.
Well, we're on the side yard now.
I know you are, but...
Yes.
Again, it's our decision to give the variance, and we're looking for something a little bit farther back.
But I thought we agreed upon if I could get the side yard variance, it would be acceptable.
What we... What we talked about when we met you at the residence, the both of us were both there, we'd actually...
We first...
Mr. Shalise actually wanted it farther back than what I did, but we wanted to move it back a little bit farther. I thought that we were pretty clear about that.
Well, I've been giving it back. We moved it back into the side yard, into the front of each one. It's a variance for a front structure.
My main... Yeah, my main concern, as I said before, was people sitting outside, which is in the front, people from the road or house opposite to it, they can see it clearly.
You can't see it...
No, they cannot see... They cannot see the pool, but people... They can see the people clearly.
Yeah, but even if you're in the side yard, you can see it.
It may be far... Lot further away, right. That's the reason I was insisting to have all the way back.
The problem with going any farther back is we're going to be in that swell. We're going to do a contour adjustment by hiring Mr. Paggi, Christian Paggi, the engineer, to do a contours in reference to that swell. The reason why we originally wanted the pool in the front was because of the wet yard in the back.
Right. And we saw that when we walked the property.
We've seen that. So, that was my... That was my problem that I needed the variance for, and that was my contingency for having a hardship. And then I said, "Okay, look, I'll get a contour of the property, and there's swells, as you all seen, there's swells on the property." And then swells, there's a finished basement in that house by coming in. And the problem is, if we push the pool back any farther, I'm going to be inside that swell. We're in a suburb. All I need now is a variance of the 13 feet. I'm not looking for the front yard. Don't we agree upon that? To be honest with you. And now, all of a sudden, we come here today, and there's a change.
Now, what I see is people sitting in the front yard, front yard technically, not even side.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shaw.
People can see, sit in the front yard, so if anybody walking outside, they will see the people are moving in a swimming suit and everything, and I don't think that's the right message we are sending. Especially...
Well, I see...
Especially in a million-dollar house area.
Right.
I think we should have a little bit more privacy for everyone.
Well, the problem is that whole area, as you see, with... On the hill, this... Even if it was in the back yard, which could not be done, because the problem was, there was a water situation.
Have you... Excuse me a second. This water situation you're talking about, is that your opinion? Have you had engineering review of the whole thing?
Yes. Christian Paggi's doing a contour adjustment on the property. We have swells. It's clear that it's... It's very clear that there's a hardship there. That's one of the necessary...
So, we understood the back of the... We understood the back of the property, you took us through there, we understand you can't put the pool back there, because that's originally what we thought, is that a possibility? You took us through the drainage issues, all the water that settles back there, you showed us the drains where the water is up to the top of the drains. But I thought when Mr. Shaw and myself were out there, that what we thought about doing is just moving it back a little bit farther, and I thought you said it was okay to take some of the swell on the side and try to take that off, so it didn't affect the drain on the side. That's what I thought we kind of agreed to.
Well, here's what happened. We went there, the property line, I feel we had the property line, put it on the sideline, and we needed a property variance. But when we had it surveyed again, and we found out that we needed a variance, and if we put it where you and Mr. Shaw and I were, the pool would be on the property line. You know, if we lifted it, and then we made a little top, and we fill it on the side, it just wouldn't work. Now, so am I under the understanding that I'm probably not going to get the variance for the property side, if I leave the pool on the sideline?
Well, we don't know that, but just so you know, there's four board members, there's typically five of us, so...
Yeah, but I see two, you know, two white for me and two didn't. It'd be lost.
Yes.
I feel very disappointed really in that, because I feel that, in all fairness, I went ahead and I changed the plans to the sideline, and all I said, and I said, "Will it be comparable, that we be reasonably getting a sideline variance?" And I thought we wanted the impression that we would. Now, I showed it... I showed a hardship. I clearly showed hardship. I got a contour adjustment to the property before I had a building permit, I got that a contour of the swell, so that the rest of the property would not flood. Disappointing. So, I would contend that we used the sideline as a front door, so we're farther back now. The actual sideline is to the front of the house, if you looked at the plans that we discussed. We are back, but we are... Look at the plans. I'll put my plans up, if you don't have them, I'll show them.
I don't understand what you just said. Could you say that again, please?
The plans of the house, the sideline, from this board the last time, was that the circular part of the home in the front. Anything from the rear, that is the sideline. We're behind that.
The front line, you mean.
You're talking about the front yard line, here's the bay window.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's true.
We agree.
And even Susan showed us...
There's no disagreement that it's considered the side yard. We're not disagreeing with her. What we're asking for is to move it farther back, and that's what I thought we discussed. And I thought you were going to come in with... Honestly, I thought you were going to come in with another set of plans here that was going to move it back. That's what we thought.
No, we brought another set of plans in the last... After we left at the last meeting. Listen, Al, I'm not being argumentative. I'm being factual. We brought another plan... I brought the other set of plans, and when the other plans didn't go, if everybody remembers, I brought the other set of plans in.
But this is the same... You brought in two sets of plans. Let's be honest here. You brought in two. You had Plan A, Plan B, which gets us back to what we call the side yard. And what we did when we did the site visit, maybe there's a misunderstanding, but we thought that you were going to pull it back a little bit farther, because that's what we talked about.
But if you look at the plans, it's behind the front door of the house.
Yeah, the border of the pool is back, but the seating arrangement, everything is still at the front.
But first, Mr. Shaw, there's not a person here that's against it. There's nobody from this building. Is there anyone from this building that's against it?
Well, hang on a second. That's for us to ask the audience, not for you to ask the audience.
Well, what I'm asking, I'm... I feel we're under the impression, Mr. Shaw, hey, we made it, and I hired a contour assessment of the property for the swell. I went ahead and where I could place this pool, in the most legitimate way, it won't flood this house. The whole area is wet. Even on the other parts, I talked to the neighbors, it's wet. And honestly, there's a pool right behind us that we can see, and no one's complaining. The property is a beautiful property, it's on high elevation, so I don't say you can see anything. The pool's really ground. What are we worried about?
I don't think pool people can see. What my concern is, people who are using the pool, running, walking in the swimming dress, people across the road, they can see. I'm living right now...
It's more elevation.
Yeah, so they will... That's the reason I want to put it back. My concern got more concerned, when I see those four chairs even came out more front than originally even not proposed, right? So, those chairs sitting in the front, I don't think the original plan was there.
Those what chairs?
Those four chairs, what you are showing here on your Plan B.
But that chairs is something... Please use it as a...
Yeah, but that people be walking, right? In the swimming dress, right?
Excuse me?
In swimming costume, they will be walking in that area, so people across it everywhere will see that. That's my concern. If you put that one far away, I'm okay, but why I won't see somebody from my window, just like across by my house, with that kind of thing?
But I...
That's my concern.
I'm appealing to you to show that I showed you, you want to see the pictures again. I'll show you the actual pictures, you were there.
Yeah, I see.
The elevations are high.
True, right.
Down below, you can't even see on the top of that property.
I can see pool, so I'm sure I can see the people walking around. It's easy.
Yeah, but you see people walking into a house, that don't make it illegal?
No, but swimming pool, everything I don't want to see. That's my concern.
He's going to answer.
That's always my concern, right? So...
Go ahead. So, Bob, I think has a question for you.
So, how far back could you move it comfortably?
Well, that whole area is a swell. Once we get into the side yard, we... We're... If you look at the front door of the house...
My question is, could you move it further back?
Not on that plan, because we'd be back into that drain.
We can't. So, this is... It's this or nothing?
So, let me ask a question. Can you move it... Can you move it back 10 to 15 feet?
That's what I'm trying to get.
That's what we're trying to... We're trying to figure out, how far can you move it back? Sir, would you like to say something? Because we'll open up to the public now. Anybody in the public like to speak for or against it? I'd be more than happy to listen to if you have something you'd like to say.
No.
Oh, no, actually, there's the gentleman with the...
I'm just curious what 10 or 15 feet would do. The concern is that you're in a neighborhood, we all know what our neighbors are doing, we see our neighbors coming over.
So, sir, could you just come up to the podium and give us your name and address, so that we have for the records, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Todd Micus, 33 Vanderwater Drive, Wapingers Falls. I was here a couple of months ago for a variance myself.
Okay.
Just listening to the questions, Mr. Shaw, you seem to have a concern about neighbors being able to see activity around the pool. I don't understand why that's a concern. Quite honestly, I just got a variance for a pool. Mine's in my side yard also. My side yard is along three backyards in my neighborhood. Everybody in my neighborhood can see my pool, who's on the deck, what we're doing, we're having a party, not having a party. I mean, this is what happens in neighborhoods. I just don't understand that objection, and your question goes to, could you move it back 10 or 15 feet? If... What's that going to do for the view? Just with a picture in my head of what's going on here, 10 or 15 feet's not going to change the view. I just... I don't understand what your objection is to this. Again, I haven't been there, haven't seen the plans, but I got a pretty good picture, and I know that area. I don't see what the problem is. That's just me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak for or against? Bob, you'll get your chance to come back up in a second. Okay, come on back up.
So, anyway, thank you very much. So, it is a development, but it's a very nice development, and the landscaping of that residence is high in elevation, beautiful stone walls.
But the retaining...
We're in the side...
But the retaining walls, we got that, so you've got a couple of retaining walls there, but they really don't cover anything. The retaining walls are not that high, and you wouldn't want them that high anyway, because they would, you know, distort their view and everything else that they have.
Well, the retaining walls existing, they're there. The height of the elevation is a consideration that should be taken into effect, because when the pool's there, when we're down on a lower level, you're seeing the walls, you're not seeing the pool. But I... I mean, like this, like I said earlier, there's a pool in the backyard of the other house. People see... The Bettinis could see the other pool. This is a neighborhood. It's not a 10-acre parcel. So, I was under the impression that this would be a fairly thing, you know, fairly slam dunk. I understand the front yard we were asking for was not going to be acceptable. That's why I brought the second set of plans in, and I thought we agreed with that. I asked the board that, in the board, not at the property, in the board, and on October 22nd, it's in the minutes.
We said that was the minimum requirement.
Right.
We actually wanted it farther back when we met you.
Yeah. I think what's happening, that somebody wants, don't like that, they should come here. They should come here if they don't like it. I don't see no opposition here. So, I think this variance being on the board in the past, on planning, zoning, and being a deputy mayor of Wapingers, if that means anything, in the past, I've been there. I don't see this as a problem. I really don't. And what I'm asking for, a small variance, we're keeping the pool as far back as we can. I'm doing a contour elevation with a licensed engineer. I said I was going to do that the last time, because we were concerned about the swells. You've seen every... When I came there, seen the swells. There's loads of water there. It's just a tough lot. If, believe me, if there was any way of putting it in the back, we would have done it. What's the difference? And it's for... I don't want to say why we're doing it, but it's... Person that lives there is pretty old, and I shouldn't even say that. I don't should have to say that. I'm asking for the variance, yes or no?
I have a question.
Sure, absolutely.
Would the condition of a privacy fence be something that you might consider?
He has to put up a fence anyway.
We have to put up a fence.
We're talking about a fence.
Not glass fence, but privacy fence.
We're talking about a privacy fence, because that seems to be one of the concerns.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with a privacy fence, to be quite honestly, because we're going to do a fence anyway, but, you know, I have no problem with that.
They're required to, by law, anyway, to do a fence.
Right.
The question is, what kind of fence do you have? Because he originally talked about a clear fence before, and we said, "No, no, we don't want to do a clear fence. We want to do something that's going to hide, you know, give you some privacy."
Well, then we talked about the metal fence, you know, the metal post fence. I have no problem with a private... You know, they got to be 48 inches high, the fence by law, for the pool. We could do that. We could put a 48-inch privacy fence. Why, because if you have to go higher, it would be... That'd be another variance. If we had to go 6 feet, it'd be another variance. So, we go 48 inches, I'd have no problem with a solid fence up there. But it's got to... If a 48 is a law, by code, by the...
When do you plan on starting the pool and getting everything?
Right after this, I was going to get the permit. I thought we were in for approval, and we were going to start immediately on the job, before the winter came in. Because next... That pool is not even going to be used, the family's not going to even be there until summer months only. They're not there in the winter.
No.
I mean, I really feel a little disappointed, because I really do. Because I thought we conceded quite a bit, and it's... Everyone there pays their taxes, they do the right thing. I don't see nobody against it.
So, there's no question about people paying taxes.
Yeah, but I don't see anybody against it either, Al. I don't know. I thought we agreed upon it last time.
No, and I'm going to have to disagree with you. We didn't agree to that. We agreed that the two of us wanted it back a little bit farther. You may have said, "If I meet the setbacks and it hits the, you know, it's the side yard, that's fine," but that's not what we talked about.
What I said the last time when I was here was, look, here's another set of plans. I'll concede not putting it in the front yard.
I don't have a problem putting the pool in, by the way. I just... The location's the only issue I have.
But legally, if I had the setbacks... Let me ask you this question. Let me rephrase. If I had the setbacks, I wouldn't need to come here for that, if I could put it on the side yard. Is that correct?
If you had the setbacks, that's correct.
Yeah. So, the difference is, I'm asking you for... I'm asking to put it in the side yard and just give me the setbacks. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking anything for the front yard. So, in other words, legally, I could do it if I had the setbacks. Period. I would just get a building permit and do it. I'm asking you, as gentlemen, and as the board, and we went through... All of you went to the site, I don't see really what a problem is. You were complaining about... Or I should... Let me rephrase. We're discussing about the people could see it from the side yard. If I had the setbacks, there would be no issue. It could be done. Correct?
That's right.
Okay. That's my point. In all fairness, for everyone. And believe me, I hope I'm not sounding argumentative, because I'm not. I don't want to be argumentative. I just want to discuss it.
Can we just firm up the thought about a privacy fence? If the privacy fence followed the outer contour of the patio pad, not at the pool, but the outer contour, four-foot-high fence that was opaque, following the contour of the patio, would that be acceptable for privacy?
Yes, yeah. From privacy point of view?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Because...
I think so. Because that's the concern I had, right?
That'll work for me.
All right. So, we could make a condition that this location is acceptable, with the condition that an opaque, four-foot-high privacy fence follow the contour of the patio?
48 inches. Yep. I even do one better for you. I even go to the contour of the wall, which would even be a better situation, right?
Is it lower? Then you can see over the fence?
Yes.
The idea of the privacy fence is, well, first of all, it has to be four feet higher than the grade at the patio. So, if you put it down by the wall...
That's correct. That's correct. By code, you're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct.
Privacy or safety.
It has nothing to do with the privacy then.
Forget the wall.
Right.
It has to follow the contour of the patio.
Right.
Which, assuming that's...
Yes.
Gives you the four foot above the pool.
Yes, no problem.
Yeah, there is one.
Yes. New patio. I'm pointing to the...
The new patio.
The new patio.
See on that...
Right.
So, this has to be very specific as what we would like if we're going to ask for that.
Yes, right, true. I mean, that should address what I think I'm talking about, is privacy. Having people walking in, where everybody can see.
We're not trying to hurt your quality of life, we're just trying to do things right.
I really, in my opinion, I have no problem with the privacy fence, but I'm going to tell you, I feel a little bit taken back, because if I was to put this pool in, and I had the setbacks for my client, this would not be an issue. I would get the permit, and it would be done. I'm bending for a privacy fence, because your neighbor, Mr. Shaw, your friend on the other side don't want it. He should have been here. Oh, no honesty, he should have been here.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about my neighbor.
We talked about your neighbor.
Even my neighbor, I don't want it.
Okay, okay, enough.
No, but I'm not... I'm going to tell you who it is here.
Let's not get railroaded here.
Let me at least say what I'm getting railroaded for. I'm sorry, I disagreed. I'll put the privacy fence in. Now, but I don't want to go make another set of plans. I want to... I'll put it in. It'll be four feet. You could say it's a solid fence around the pool. You could say that. This way, I don't have to make another set of plans to do it.
Yeah, listen, I think we're pretty close here, so let's not get...
We're trying to work with you, so, you know, you're getting frustrated at the board.
I'm getting frustrated that if I didn't need a variance, the pool could be put anywhere on the sideline of the house.
And you wouldn't be here tonight.
And I wouldn't be here tonight.
That's right.
Absolutely.
And we're... Listen, we're trying to work with you. We're trying to make this thing happen, you know? Let's play nice in the sandbox here.
Location of pump and gas, something we discussed last time.
So, you have your choice tonight. You have four board members here. If you'd like to go forward, you have to have three and one.
Except that Pete recused himself.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, you've got four board members. You need a three to one in order for it to pass tonight.
Like I said, I have no problem with the privacy fence, but I didn't want to just go to... I need to get it approved tonight, and we'll put it... And we'll put, and like you said earlier, Bob, the privacy fence, the fence cannot be put, has to be put on the top. It has to match forty-eight inches over the water level.
That's right.
That's what the code says.
Yes.
It beg you a little bit.
Okay, so we have to be specific about this.
So if you, you can make a motion to either grant or deny a variance. If you decide to, you want to make a motion to grant, you have to be very specific on the conditions that you want, as an example, the privacy fence.
What, um, we seem to have had a disconnect between last time and this time and a, and a running around, a little bit around not defined set of plans. So what about tabling the decision until we see the condition on paper?
Meaning the fence?
Yeah.
I mean, you can, you can do that too. You can, um, you can close the public hearing, or actually don't even close it, just adjourn it again.
Adjourn it again.
Adjourn it again, but now time's of the essence for, so I'm getting...
Correct. Time is the problem, but if we just said, put a forty-eight-inch fence around the pool, privacy, what I need, we're going to have to put a fence around the pool, so I can show in the fence on that, you know, on that thing. That's going to be with the building department.
Is that something that you want to see? Do you want to see the fence on the drawing?
Well, I don't want to have another miscommunication where he said this, he said that, you know, and we, we just don't understand what we all said.
Well, originally, I have, if you have the second, the first set of plans, it was in the front yard. Then we moved it to the side yard. And, and I said, okay, let's, let's stop this. That's why this continuance took place in the, in the open meeting. So the building department will take care of the fence, you just, you could say, I mean, of course, I'm not trying to say, but you could say that the, you need a, you want a privacy fence.
We can cook, we can put conditions on the variances, yes, but... So, so what we're going to do is, we're going to, yes, for a short break, what we like to do is, we're going to go into consultation here and see if we can't come up with a solution.
I appreciate that, okay.
So, what's that?
Do the other four discussions that we had, and then come back.
You want to do that, or you want to finish him up?
Well, those are holding everybody up all night.
I know, but they're here, so let's see if we can't...
I agree, I agree with V, I said, let's go move on, and then we'll come back to the fence.
Fine.
Does that agree with you?
Hundred percent.
Okay. All right, so do we need a motion to adjourn, or we just going to keep it open for now and see, we're going to?
Okay.
All right. Hopefully that's the long one on the agenda tonight. Okay, next couple of items on the agenda tonight are discussions. The first is appeal number nineteen-seven-six-nine-zero, Anthony and Danielle Jeanette, seeking area variance sections two-forty dash thirty-seven and two-forty dash thirty-dat-b, of district regulations in our forty zoning, where no two accessory buildings shall be permitted in a one-family residential district. No such accessory building should have a footprint greater than six-hundred square feet, otherwise you wouldn't be here, nor a height of twenty feet. The applicant proposing a twenty-four-by-thirty-six, three-car garage for eight-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet, thus requesting a variance of two-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet. Also, where no more than two accessory buildings shall be permitted in one family residential district, no accessory building shall have a footprint greater than six-hundred square feet, again, same kind of the other one, as the other one, or a height in excess of twenty feet. The applicant only provide twenty-two feet in the height for the construction of a three-car garage, thus requesting a variance of two feet. Where fifty feet is required for the front yard, the applicant only provide thirty-two feet for the construction of three-car garage, thus requesting a variance of eighteen. And again, where no accessory structure is permitted in the front yard, the applicant is requesting a variance for allow the construction of three-car garage in the front yard. Prop is located at twenty-nine Vanderwater Road and is identified by tax credit number six-two-five-nine-zero-four-seven-five-seven-two-three-eight in the town of Wapanger. Anthony, you are, Danielle in the audience? Come on up.
This is, never mind.
Hello, sorry, do.
How are you?
Good.
So I want you to tell us a little about what you're looking for. Are you Anthony?
Yeah.
Okay, Anthony.
Um, yeah, so I'm trying to put up a three-car garage, kind of on the side of my house. My house is an L, pretty much. So it goes like this, and trying to continue it onto the side over there. I'm covered on the side with the variance, because I have the amount of feet away from the side and the rear. The only thing is, I have, it's over, like you said, six-hundred square feet. And the front, uh, the front line for the front yard is coming from the start of the L, pretty much, and it goes diagonal, you know, across the yard.
Is there a reason why I see it's eight feet far apart from the, the house? Is there a reason why it's not a little bit closer towards the house? You want to have a...
I could put it a little, I mean, I just kind of doing like a little breezeway, you know? That's it, you know, just a little walk through.
Does the current house have a garage?
My current house, no, it doesn't.
No garage at all?
No. No, I have a basement, but that's what I'm trying to do, actually, I'm trying to get everything.
So you have an address on Vanderwater Drive?
Yeah.
But your driveway is on Corbin Street?
Yes.
So...
Went through this, trust me.
Which is the front of the house?
The front of the house is in, is straight ahead of Corbin, actually. This is my neighbor across the street over here, and we always say, why aren't we the only two on Corbin? Because both of our faces, faces are...
So your, your layout here, maybe you could come up and show, I, it's not clear to me where this building is going to be.
Yeah, it's not clear at all.
Where is it, here's your layout, here's your driveway. Where is it going to be?
So this is Corbin.
Yeah.
So it's going to be off the side over there.
Okay, so it's going to be like this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there a reason why you're looking for a three-car garage versus, because if you do six on it, naturally you don't need a variance? Is there a reason why you're looking for something?
Well, it's in the front yard, anyway.
Just, actually, to tell you the truth, extra space, extra storage, like I said, I'm going to, I have a big basement, my basement goes the length of the house. I got to tell you to get all that stuff down there.
Okay.
Kind of, kind of transferring over there, I mean, I have two cars as is.
So one of the functions of the board is to try to reduce variances, okay? Who decided this was in the front yard?
Uh...
Was that Barbara?
Barbara, yeah. Because what she did was, so from, from my driveway right there, she took the, the front of the house being from there.
Yeah, so...
So she, she went diagonal across, like towards the woods, pretty much, right there.
Okay.
And that's how she did the front.
Is there any way that you can get the front of the garage behind that line?
I don't, I...
I mean, the front of the gar, the front of the new garage, behind the line?
I could probably, yeah.
Of the front of the house, then you wouldn't need a front yard variance.
Yeah, the front, the front, yeah. Because like I said, I mean, like I said, I wasn't sure where the front line was when I was talking to her.
Okay.
Because I wasn't sure if it was off that corner or off the side corner of the house, and I was kind of going off that when I made the, kind of little draw.
Okay, so, so that's not clear.
So, so just, I saw you draw it two seconds ago, but you're going to be Corbin and, where Corbin and Vanderwater meet?
Yeah, that's, that's like the corner.
That's the corner, you're going to be, that garage is going to be facing that corner? Is that where?
No, it's over the opposite side.
Opposite side?
Yeah, opposite side.
Facing Corbin?
Yes, facing Corbin, yes. Yeah, you got to kind of look at it, well...
Yes, I think, I think what we'd like to do is, do you have it staked out by any chance?
What's that?
Do you have it staked out?
I don't, but I, I can, I was going to do it.
Yeah, because what we'd like to do is, we'd like to take a, take a visit there, see what it looks like, and see if we can work with this thing, move it a little bit, if we can, potentially. And, you know, because it is, you got a number of variances here, and again, we, we try to have as few variances as we possibly can.
Yeah, yeah.
Because once we set it for you, then we set a precedent.
Yeah.
And so then we got to do it for everybody. So Mr. Makis will be back here saying, well, you did it for my neighbor, and why can't you do it for me, so?
He's not afraid to come up here.
So what do you say? What do you think, we just will go to a site visit, like on Saturday? So why don't you stake it out for us? We'll do a site visit on Saturday, probably around nine o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine.
And we'll take a look and see if we, because certainly we want to work with the residents.
Yeah, do, normally we would schedule a public hearing for the next zoning board meeting, but there's so many variances here that I think we need to really look at it and discuss it again. So I'm not comfortable scheduling the public hearing for the next meeting. Are you in a hurry to build this thing?
I'm going to get started before we're done.
It's gotten kind of cold out already, I mean, I've been going through this process for a couple of months. I know, I mean, I could wait till the spring and get the topic deal, but I'd just rather get everything done.
I think what we can do, Bob, is we can, we can talk to Barbara about if we have some issues in between. I'd like to schedule the public hearing for two weeks, though, move this thing along.
Okay.
So, but still, you want to come Saturday?
Still going to come Saturday for the site visit, but we'll have, we'll schedule the, the actual public hearing for two weeks, and move forward. Okay?
What's that date?
Are you ready?
Yeah, what's the date?
The twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I'm here.
You're here? No, I will not be here.
Saturday is the sixteenth. That's the site date?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Public hearing is the twenty-sixth. Thank you, Steve.
So all of us will be there on the sixteenth? We all will be available, or we have the second?
I won't be here on the twenty-sixth, but I'll be there for the site visit, so...
Sixteenth, oh, I thought. There's phone numbers you can call.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, let's keep going here, so we can, get Mr. Giuliano out here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes.
Yep. Okay, another one with about four variances here. It's appeal number nineteen-seven-six-nine-one, Edward Collins, seeking area variance of section two-forty dash thirty-seven of district regulations in our forty slash eighty zoning district, where fifty feet is required to the rear. The applicant only provide two feet for legalization of a garage, thus requesting a variance of forty-eight feet. Also, where forty-eight feet is required by the side yard, the applicant only provide four-point-six for legalization of the garage, thus requesting a variance of thirty-five-point-four. Where forty feet is required to the side, the applicant only provide thirty-eight-point-six feet, thus requiring, requesting a variance of one-point-four to make the garage legal. And last variance is for fifty feet is required to the front yard, the applicant can provide twenty-five-point-one feet for legalization of a three-room season, thus requesting a variance of twenty-four-point-nine feet. Prop is located at two Hamilton Road and is identified by tax credit number six-one-five-seven-zero-one-zero-three-two-eight-seven-two in the town of Wapanger. Mr. Collins. Come on down, Bryce is right today. So I'm assuming that this is already, the garage is already there, you're...
It's a, yeah, it's a shed. I don't consider it a garage.
It's a shed, it's not...
It's a garage door, it's about five foot by, maybe, not quite six feet tall.
Yeah, I...
But it's a shed that was used by my father for his lawn mowers.
I was going to ask you a question, when these were built, but then I saw it in here someplace, nineteen-forty-five?
Yeah, it was all greenhouses back there. It's, we had an old, my neighbor next to me, her father had a piece of a survey map and a woman that my father first bought from the back fifty-three. So he put his foundation in first, but anyway, she had given me a, the survey showing, she said there was always sheds on all the properties. And she goes, Ed, it shows your sheds, and it shows where, where our driveways were, there was two sheds on her property, and there was one shed on my property, right where the driveway is, and one shed at the back. And it was all greenhouses all around the back area. So anyway, the shed had always been there, and it was even on the, it was in one of the records they had, as far as the shed. As far as the porch goes, my father must have the porch, the...
Three Cs, or...
The screen porch he had put on. I don't know what year, I can't remember, I've lived there all my life, but I don't know what year he put it on at all.
It's been there as long as you can remember.
Correct. And it's, the house, of course, obviously wouldn't be zoning board, because it's, the house is closer to the road than the porch in the front. The porch sits back maybe about a foot or two foot.
But this probably predated some of the zoning restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so all you're trying to do is, you're trying to make, are you trying to sell the house?
We were selling the house, and we were in contract. And everything, you know, they had asked all these questions, did you have a survey? And I said, no, whatever they have at the town, the law or the taxes. And after we were in contract, my lawyer said, you know, you got to go to the town of Wapangers, we're told, you have to sign a piece of paper, have it notarized, and they have to walk your progress. I said, oh, okay. And once I did that...
That's when you found out.
Found out. You got to have a survey, you have to get a building permit, building permit's denied, you got to get a variance, so here I am. And, you know, right now I'm paying, just to keep the buyers on the contract.
Sure.
So I'm just trying to get things straight.
I have a question, Mr. Collins. On, on the survey that you provided, it says property, or I guess Steven Van Tassel.
That's, that would be my neighbors. What survey are you looking at?
It's this one here, so my question is, is this, what on this, or it pertains to us? Both of these structures pertain to us? Do you want, you can come on up if you like.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only one, the other one...
No, no, this is, this is my father's.
These two right here.
This is my property. Okay, so we own the front lot and the back lot, but there's still two separate pots. And this is my neighbors', this is their line.
Right, so we're only talking about the two in the box.
So her garage is here, her garage is actually...
Right on the Broadway line.
I mean, they were built in fifty-three.
Yep.
So...
We were talking only about this.
And there's a little, there's a screen porch here, that's the one we're talking about.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. That, that confused me.
No, yeah, that's the...
Then when you mentioned something about being on your neighbor's property, it was a little confusing.
Yeah, no, and I gave them a bunch of paperwork, it was a...
Yeah, we got it all, we got it all.
Okay. I mean, they had no problems with anything, but...
We were not.
You just got caught, this, it's been out there, it was already back then, and I'm trying to make things right, I get it.
Take a look? Just for...
Yeah, we should take a look, is there, do you have something that marks out, you should take out your property, just so we can see, you know?
Well, they, they just had, I just had this survey, it was just done.
Okay, so you have some kind of, on marks or identifiers, so we can see?
Yeah, there's a...
That's fine.
And my neighbor just had hers survey. She also offered to let them have hers survey, if they needed to look at. And I, I think the stakes are still in where they...
If they're not there, can you somehow mark it, so we can just see when we go out? Because we're going to do a site visit on Saturday as well, by around nine fifteen or so.
You just want to see the...
I just want to see where your property line is, that's all I want to see.
Yes.
Yep, that's fine. Okay.
Okay.
Good, so we'll see you around nine fifteen on Saturday.
Public hearing.
And is that the public hearing?
Saturday?
Yeah, we'll be there Saturday. Public hearing is set for the twenty-sixth as well.
Oh.
No. The surveys I gave you.
You don't have...
What do you need? Oh, that's a good one. Got it.
Okay.
Okay. We're getting there, guys are almost ready for us. Hey, Anthony, thank you.
See you Saturday, Bob.
See you.
Okay, next on the agenda for tonight is appeal number nineteen-seven-six-nine-two, Fred Thomas, seeking area variance in section two-forty dash fifty-seven-A.
Same, same as Saturday.
Same day. Nine fifteen and, and then the public hearing on the twenty-sixth. Seeking, where there are fifty percent of the house footprint of two-thousand-and-thirty-four square feet, times two percent equals ten-seventeen square feet, and it's required the applicant only provide two arrays totaling twelve-fifty-two-seventy-eight square feet, for the installation of a ground solar array, thus requesting a variance of two-thirty-five-point-seventy-eight square feet. Prop is located at one-ninety-seven Riverview Drive and is identified by tax credit number sixty-five-six-zero-two-seven-seven-two-eight-four-zero in the town of Wapanger. Mr. Thomas.
Hi, my name is Robert Hamel, I'm speaking on behalf of Fred Thomas.
Okay. Please tell us a little about what you're looking to do here, I know I kind of read it, but if there's any other details you'd like to add, we'd appreciate that.
Sure, what we're looking to do is add to an existing ground mount solar array that's on the property, which is probably half the size of what's there now. I know we're exceeding the, the regulation regarding the square footage, but the property is fifteen acres of land, and you virtually can't exceed the existing footage. So I don't, I don't perceive that there'll be any negative impact on...
So a question, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was waiting for a third one.
I just want to have a real question.
The question I have is, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you said there's already an array there?
Yes.
Okay, that's already approved?
That was put in...
It was installed in two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
So before the regulation covered solar ground mount, no?
That would be for the, the planning board, especially this permit for this addition, and the planning board sent them to you.
Because of the, it's bigger than the fifty percent of the house, number of the house.
It's a small house, but he uses a lot of electricity, and the addition of this system will actually enable him to offset a hundred percent of his utility bill?
So the, just curious then, the, are we adding to the array that we already have, is that, is that the number that's included in here?
Correct.
Or is this completely separate number that you're talking about?
No, this is the combined square footage of both arrays.
Thank you. And in Riverview Drive, it says Fishkill, New York, right? So, but it's town of Wapanger.
Correct.
I think we ran into that one before.
We did, we did.
Yeah, and it's not the village of Wapingers, which I originally submitted as a variant with. Okay.
Any other questions from the, the board?
So this is not commercially used, this is just for residential use?
This is pure residential use.
That's all.
This, the, the array is only about nine feet off the ground in the back.
So that supplies enough for the entire house, does it supply power for anything else, or no?
The house was built with the intent of having electric heat.
That's the reason.
And now I'd like to get a zero-carbon footprint of the house.
There is a limit, isn't there, to a hundred and ten percent of your bill, something like that, right, in the array size?
Right, utilities, utilities won't let you go over a hundred and ten percent.
Right.
Because they don't want to turn residential customers into power producers.
They can't sell power, essentially.
That's correct.
Right, and, and you really don't want to sell power, because...
Right.
When you're offsetting your own utility bill, you're offsetting at the retail rate. But if you were overproducing and you wanted to get money back from the utility, they're selling it back to you at a wholesale rate.
So on the, on the fifteen acres of land that you have, is it like way off the street, is it, I'm sure it's way in the back where you.
If you grew up to the end of the town road, or entering my property, even now with the leaves off the tree, you could not see that.
Okay.
I, I thought I was driving you into the woods when I first met.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
We should both.
We should take a look. So, you'd like to be there Saturday, probably around nine thirty, nine forty-five?
If we can find it.
If we can find it.
And which Saturday is that, this Saturday?
This Saturday. Yep, this Saturday.
Is that good for you guys?
Yeah, we're just under a little bit of a time constraint, because we wanted to get the system built before the end of this year. Cause the federal tax credits dropped from thirty percent to twenty-six percent.
Yeah.
So there's money lost, real money lost, you missed that date.
Assuming the public hearing is on the twenty-sixth, that's when you'll get your, your ruling, but we can't do any sooner than that week.
So the public hearing would be on the twenty-sixth?
Yep, and then a decision will be made that night.
Hopefully we'll make this.
And then we could get the permit then?
Then you get the permit.
Okay. Couple of days, right?
Well, relatively soon thereafter, B would be able to tell you exactly when.
Yeah, it might be a couple of days after the twenty-sixth, based on the paperwork she has to do, but, I mean, it's not like it's a week or months, it's.
If it's approved.
Fairly soon after that. Okay?
Bring your gloves. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I would in same situation, December comes, you won't get done. And.
Yep.
Okay, last item on the agenda before we come back, so Mr. Giuliano, here, well, uh, is, um, appeal number nineteen seven six nine three, Janet Marie Wilson. Seeking area variance of section two forty dash thirty-seven district regulations in our eighty zoning, where forty feet is required to the side yard. The applicant can provide thirty-seven point four feet for a construction enclosed deck eight by thirteen, thus requesting a two point four, uh, foot variance. Prop located at three eighty-four Cedar Hill Road and is identified by tax grid six two five six zero one two seven one eight one six in the town of Wapanger. Why don't you come on up, you don't look like Janet, but come on up. We're going to, so please give us your name and, and, uh, you know, where you live, or if you're the construction, you know, person that's going to handle this, or whatever.
Uh, my name is Glenn Ladue.
Okay.
I live in, uh, West Park, uh, New York. Formerly a resident of Cedar Hill Road and Smithtown Road, my sister's property.
Okay.
Um, by this, um, we'd like to, um, say, it's a, a small eight by thirteen extension, more like the, um, enclosed porch area. Um, and instead of, um, it, the paperwork says two foot four, but I, I think I'd be two foot six, um. Thirty-seven six from forty.
So you think thirty-seven six is actually thirty-seven four, and they got the numbers mixed?
No.
Yeah, it's thirty-seven six, right?
Yeah, so it's only a two foot four.
Two foot six each.
So thirty-seven six from forty, I were, I guess requesting a two foot six variance. So.
Okay?
Yeah, two each more.
So it's a two foot six varying, huh? Can we just say? Two foot four, two foot six. Twelve inches and a foot, not ten inches.
Okay, is this thirty-seven six inch means two and six inch, you are right. Or if it, if it is thirty-seven eight inch, then two and four inch is right?
Uh, thirty-seven six.
So, so that's the real number, thirty-seven six.
So the variance is two foot six.
Six inch, right. Yep.
You have to fix the, uh, applica- application says two foot four.
Yeah, can we make that small modification, so, so we got it right, I mean, it's not gonna make a difference.
Well. On the first page of the application, it says two foot four, it should be two foot six.
Is that what you want, two foot six?
Oh, that's forty feet minus thirty-seven six is two point four. Right?
Cause for this calculation.
It's twelve inches and a foot.
Yeah, right.
With the forty feet setback.
Right.
He can provide thirty-seven six.
Okay.
He's asking for two point, I mean, two to four.
Two six, actually this is wrong, it's supposed to be two six, because six and six become twelve, means one foot. So, I think it's, yes, it's not decimal, it is each, yeah, yeah, it's not decimal.
I don't want people to think it's ten.
I don't know why.
Yeah.
Anyway, it should be two point six, so it's just a miscalculation, we'll correct that on the paperwork.
Yes, alright.
Okay, so now that we got this straightened out, it's a two fo- two feet six inch variance that you need, um, is there anything there today? Is there any kind of porch there today, or are you just new, is this, you're gonna extend it?
No, there's a, uh, actually a concrete slab out there.
Okay. And that's all that's here today?
Yes.
And again, I, I don't see on the drawing that you provided where this is going.
Sir, sir. It's right, this part right here. Enclosed porch, proposed, enclosed porch. What was the reason for this, it was, uh, oh, easy entrance without steps, okay. So it's just a place to get out of the weather on the way into the house?
Where would your steps go, are they gonna come on the side, or where would they go?
It's ground level.
Oh, so they just walk right in to the doors?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're putting cover over a, an existing platform?
No, the slab, uh, doesn't have any footings, so it's just a slab that moves and.
Oh.
It'd have, we'd have to.
You have to take it out? And put in something with footings?
Yeah, frost wall.
Okay.
Yep.
And is there a door there now, in the bu- going into the building?
Yes.
Okay.
A sliding, uh, slider.
Okay.
Part of the, um, the reason is, the Southern Dutchess Gun Club is right next door, and it's, um, years ago, I mean, they've, my sister's been there for like fifty years. And, um, it's getting to be that, with the rapid fire, um, firearms and the size of the. I don't know, it just sounds like they almost shoot cannon.
Is this gonna be a, a three season room, or is this just to use during the summertime?
It's heated.
You're gonna have heat out there, or is it gonna be?
It's gonna be heated, yeah.
Okay.
The other reason.
So it's a place to hang out in the house on the other side from the.
The guns.
The guns.
I mean, she could hang out on the other side, she's got a deck, she can't use. Now, the other side of the house is like a moved over area, but it's, it's, uh, it's, it's pretty, pretty wicked really. Another reason, uh, is she's older, and even though there's another access in the backyard on the opposite side of the house. Uh, just recently, uh, her husband, a week ago her husband passed away, but therefore, uh, to get him out, she had to go down the ramp and then up. And it was just close, but this is, this is like, you know, really has easy access, so it's, there wouldn't be any, any significant step at all to get in to that.
How much property do you have? How much property do you have?
Uh, I, I really, uh.
One point zero seven.
I really don't know, it's a nail.
Yeah, one point zero seven, eighty feet.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, so to be clear, cause there's two different, one, one piece of paper says it's unheated enclosed entry porch, and the other one, on the next page, the unheated is crossed out. And it says heated, and you said heated.
It's heated, yeah.
It's gonna be heated enclosed entry porch.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just wanna make sure that both papers are the same.
She has a lot of outdoor plants, she wants to be able to bring in in winter time and stuff.
You're better off saying it's gonna be heated, and if you decide not to do it.
Yeah.
You've already got the approval, so.
Initially it was gonna be unheated, but then, I mean, it was supposed to be changed anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions for the board?
Nope.
Okay, um, with that, there'd be a public hearing on the twenty-sixth, and, uh, you know, we wanna do a site visit this Saturday as well, probably around ten-ish. Uh, so if you can kinda stake out, I guess we can kinda see it, but if you can stake out where the edge of your property is, so we can see the slab to the property line, that'll be great. And then we can just take a quick look, and it should be more of a formality, but again, we need to take a look at it.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for your service.
You're welcome. Okay, if I can ask for a motion to go into executive session for consultation, come back out after that.
We could be.
Yeah. Yep.
So we're gonna do this in the order that's on the agenda, I guess, yeah, that, that works more or less.
As far as the visits go, yeah.
The vis- the visits come.
Yep.
Alright.
So we gotta go to executive session, I mean, how they ask Mr. Giuliano.
No, we can leave. Don't you?
We're gonna go into, we're gonna go to the pizza office.
Just let him go.
Well, then we're still on TV. Then we'll be on TV for executive session, yeah?
We, we can walk up.
No, you all said.
I'd rather need to motion to go into executive session for legal advice, we'll be gone for ten minutes.
Yeah, ten minutes is fine. We're just going to the office.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for legal advice.
Second?
Second.
There.
Aye.